Is 5:30, I will call the work session to order. Um, let's see, the only thing I think we have, the big thing is property valuation process over. Ryan Johnson, welcome.
Let's give a, well, maybe we could start with introductions.
Sure.
I don't know if we did it briefly, but Brent, Mayor of City Manager.
Eric Perschmann, City Council.
Brittany Good, Administrative Services Coordinator.
Courtney Johnson, Mayor.
Kristi Monks, City Council.
Jim Wigan, Audience.
Laurie Sayer, City Council.
So thankful for having Ryan out. A lot of times, as you are aware, when we have our truth in taxation hearings, we often reference, well, you should call the county assessor's office. And then it kind of just kind of goes. And sometimes we hear back from folks, sometimes we don't. We really never had a conversation at a council level, how the assessment process is and how it works within our general tax system. And so I, not doing Brian, I've asked if he'd be willing to provide the council with an overview on that process. And so with that, Ryan takes the lead.
All right, well, we got a little PowerPoint presentation here. Hopefully sheds some light on how property taxes and assessment works and how they work together. There are a lot of misconceptions out there. Brent was sharing, you guys had a couple of calls, there was questions from the truth in taxation hearings. So not uncommon, we get those same kind of questions all the time. Folks show up for county budget hearings as well. So hopefully this helps shed some light on that. This is kind of the agenda here. We'll talk about property taxation, property assessment. I threw a little city and county data in here for you guys as well. Let's first start off with property taxation. So as you might have heard, we have one of the most complex property tax systems in the country. Average classifications per U.S. state is about five. Depending on how you want to interpret what Minnesota has here, you could say we got about 50 to 55 different classifications. So you can see how that kind of can get confusing just from the standpoint of classifying real estate and real property and how that's going to work from a tax capacity standpoint. Why is that? Why are we so different? You know, that'd be a great question for the lawmakers. Legislature, actually, they dictate all these class rates and the tiering. My best guess would be, we have here in the Midwest, a lot of farmland. So you can see, kind of where you look at the 2A, 2B section, there's a lot of stuff with regards to ag land, rural bacon land, you know, house garage and one acre tax rates and things like that. So when you, when you have a lot of, you know, farm studs, farmland and ag kind of in your state that can kind of influence, you know, dictate what you're going to have for different class rates. So that's my best guess as to why we've had this many. And the state being the state, they love to change these around a little bit from year to year. Add a, you know, add another classification. They recently added like a short-term rental for VRBL stuff. Had a consistent 1.25% class rate. They'll change the tiering. You know, a big one is, it's not reflected here because it'll be for 24 pay 25. The homestead market value exclusion was increased from 4138, from a ceiling of 4138 to 517,200. So not a huge jump, and it took them 10 years to do it. You know, values have been increasing, but it is a change. Another thing is that, that ag tiering. You can see they get that ag tier up to $2,150,000 for all those ag parcels that can be linked up. That's going to change to $3,150,000 for the 24 assessment. So my best guess to, to answer your question would be just simply a lot of farmland. And they're trying to, you know, kind of accommodate those folks. So this is kind of a basic overview on how everything kind of works here. So you can see the assessor, we have our job here, trying to value and classify each property as of January 2nd of February here. The auditor does their part with basically looking at taxable market value times a class rate, getting tax capacity times a local rate, right? And at the end, you finally get total property tax payable. And you can see where you guys sit in there with the city, county, school, et cetera, when you're talking about setting budgets, which is operating expenses. So this is a pretty good thing. We have this out on our website, too. This is a timeline showing basically how the assessment and property tax process works in Minnesota. So taking it from the left, you can see the, what I'm using here is going to be relative to the 23 assessment pay 24, since that's all finalized. You guys just had your TNT meeting for pay 24. So that's what this kind of, you know, timeline speaks to. The months are going to be the same, but I see the years would change as you move forward. So if you're looking at the January 2nd, 2023 date, that value date up there in the top left, we're actually looking at sales that occurred from October of 2021 through September of 2022 to set that January 2nd, 2023 value. So then what happens after that? We send out our valuation notices and tax statements for the pay year. And the valuation notice is going to be for the following pay year, but for that year's assessment. So we do mail those out in the same envelope, just a way for the county to say, that kind of makes sense. So after that county board of equalization meets in June, then you can see where that estimated 2024 tax notice comes out in November, which is kind of what we just had here for the TNT notices.
So I imagine the computers have made the sales study a lot more straightforward versus the old days where.
Where it was done by hand.
Where you had to go by hand.
Yeah, I mean, what it did is it really made making mass changes a lot easier. We still have to do a lot of the data analysis. And the state has their data analysis as well, because obviously they have some skin in this game. We have to follow statute, certain ratio statutes, evaluation statutes that we have to follow. So yeah, to your point, it's simply made things a lot easier streamlined. But the big thing is being able to make those changes in mass a lot easier than it would have been with paper. If that kind of makes sense.
Sure.
So I put a little X where we are today. So TNT notices went out. And what's happening now is the next, the next phase is going to be, I guess, from our standpoint, from our, from our county government side, you're going to have the auditors working up their, you know, paid 2024 final tax bill stuff right now. And that'll go out along with the 2024 tax statements and valuation notices, usually last week in March, first week in April. So then we have first and second half taxes due up there in those dates. So hopefully that kind of makes sense. You know, we talk to folks, we try to paint a three-year picture. So if we're looking at this January 2nd, 2023 assessment for tax payable 2024, it's going to be everything that occurred in calendar year 2022. So all the market conditions, any improvements you made to your home, anything that affects value occurred in 2022. That sets that January 2nd, 2023 assessment, right? And the only thing that happens in 2023 is that's the notice year. You get your valuation notice in the spring, you got time to appeal, you go to county boards. Once the county board convenes, usually late June, those values become certified and I can't change them. That's when you guys get notice of, usually the sales assessment summaries out. You know, it's going to be looking with the value distribution by class. Then you have all the taxing authorities working up their operating expenses, budgets, which become levies. And you send out your TNT notice, you know, in sometime in November. So that's going to be for payable 2024. So 2022 is your market conditions and changes, January 2nd, 23 assessment. Notice here is all of 233, and, and nobody's really paying anything on what happened in 2022 until 2024. And once you start explaining that to people, a light bulb goes off. Because they think we're literally, you know, crediting and debiting accounts on a daily basis because values are always fluctuating. And it doesn't, it's not really value times rate equals what you pay. So once you start painting this picture to them, it kind of helps them understand the process a little bit more.
Ryan, this makes a lot of sense of why the timing has to be what it is.
Yes.
But saying that, I'm going to speak out of the other side of my mouth. But at the same time, it's always a bummer when folks come to us disputing their valuation.
Sure.
Because they only realize that it feels like when they see their tax statement or the next year.
Sure.
And it's hard for us to say like, you need to talk to the county assessor.
Sure.
In April, where there's really no, and I, I understand that their window.
Yeah.
That they had the opportunity, but the window was missed. But is there ever any talk, or is there any way that you could make those windows overlap so that it's a little bit more when you're hearing from folks about it?
Well, you know, I guess if you want to call it the appeal season, that's all dictated by the state.
Oh, okay.
So, you know, folks will get their valuation notice along with their payable, saying your tax statement is covered. You know, the state dictates, even down to how those forms are laid out, those valuation and tax forms. We don't get to change a whole lot of stuff on there. We can't even change the contrast and the coloring. But somewhere on there it says, your time to appeal your value and classification is now. Call the assessor's office. Sure. Go ahead.
Yeah. So for, because it's January of this year, right? So when the March notice comes out, you basically have until April, May.
You'll have April, May and the better part of June. You'll have to call and appeal.
To appeal your current, which would be basically your 24.
Your 24, pay 25 for this one. Yep, yep. So, you know, I know those forms aren't great to come out. You know, we wish it was, you know, bigger bold type, bigger font. And we do relay that information to the states, the decision makers. But yeah, I agree. But at some point, you know, values have to become certified so that the process can move on. Another point is, and I'll cover this again, I know people don't want to hear this, but there is always tax court. So once those values, you know, once the county board convenes, those values become certified for that assessment, the only lever to go back in time and change that assessed value or classification is to file a tax court by April 30th, in which the year the tax will become payable. So you have until that following April, if that makes sense.
Yeah, so if the folks that we saw in December wanted dispute.
Yeah.
They have until April 30th of this year. Okay, okay, that makes sense.
But, you know, oftentimes, they can call us, they can talk to the appraiser. We can come up and make sure that the data, you know, do an inspection, offer inspection if they'll let us in. And make sure that the data that does drive values accurate for this 24 assessment, that kind of makes sense. You know, if they're talking to you in November. So we can't go back in time and change the 23 pay 24. We can focus on everything going forward. Sometimes just that conversation and going out and taking a look at the property certainly helps people in that position. Always something to offer up, too.
So another, on the, on the valuation. So the county has a website where you can look at the neighboring homes valuation, right?
Yeah, yeah, like public GIS.
Your home seems like an outlier.
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, all those values are on there. I think you can actually search like property tax statements here on the auditor's webpage.
Is that the state or is that the county?
That's through the county.
The county, okay.
Right on our site. We have a search bar, you can search kind of property info type, but it'll bring it to you.
Yeah, if you go to the Carver County GIS, and you just click on whatever property, right there listed with all the different things you can choose and one of them's property tax town.
Absolutely. So here's a basic overview, like I said. January 2nd, 2023, we're setting a value and classification. At the end of 2023, and this is where you guys sit in, city, county, school, et cetera, all the tax authorities are setting their values. Preliminary in 23, filed 24, calculating local tax rates, credits, et cetera. This is done in the auditor's office. You could say this times this equals this, if that kind of makes sense. I got a little example here. I call it the four-house town scenario. I didn't come up with that, I mean, this is a, you know, this four-house town, you could pick three people golfing, you could pick a five-house town. I have a warning on here because obviously we're not factoring in commercial properties and their class rates and things like that. This is kind of, you know, valuation versus property tax in its most simplistic format, if there is such a thing, if that kind of makes sense. So that's why I've got the warning here. So let's say in this four-house town, your overall levy budget impact is going to be $4,000 between the city, county, school, et cetera. As you can see, each house is worth the same amount of money. They're all paying the same share of taxes. At a 1% class rate, they're all paying a thousand dollars on that hundred thousand dollars of value, if that makes sense. Now let's say levies and budgets are cut by half. All of a sudden, all these taxing authorities, all eight to 12 of them that make up the property tax bill, they're all cutting everything, because that happens all the time, right? Look at the difference. The estimated market values didn't change. They're still valued at $100,000. But every household's now just paying $500. Here's another scenario. Same set of four properties, paying the same taxes, values are cut by half. What do you guys think's going to happen?
Taxes stay the same.
Taxes stay the same. Because all the, all the, all the taxing authorities, they still need the same levy, they still need the same money. Another scenario. Somebody called an appeal. It's not going to change the $4,000 that's needed to operate. See, the burden is shifted to the other property owners. Sure, that one individual property had its individual payable property taxes reduced, but the burden was picked up by the other properties. Here's another one. See, we got a Lakeshore House in here now, it's worth a bit more money.
I love when those lakes show up.
It's paying a slightly, paying a slightly larger percentage. Going to show you that markets can change at a different pace. That Lakeshore Home went up 20%. Everybody else only went up 7%. Very common, by the way. It seems like it doesn't matter what's going on in the world. There never seems to be a shortage of money to throw at Lakeshore property. So here's what happens. Although the Lakeshore House went up 20%, values payable taxes only went up 7%. Everybody else's taxes actually went down by 4.6%.
Because they're paying a bigger share to start with.
No additional revenues are collected, if budgets and levies are unchanged. Who will pay what portion has simply shifted. Here's a good one with taxable market value. Everybody's the same here. So we're going to remove one of these from the tax base. So somebody just submitted a property tax exempt application to me, for whatever reason. Would say I approved it. Now we've only got three properties to disperse the same amount of budget levy needed to operate everything. So sure, that one property isn't paying anything, but that burden has shifted to the other three parcels. So hopefully that four-house town kind of sets a little bit. I have an example for you. So the legislature, like I was talking about before, they set the class rates. They says who is eligible for exemptions, exclusions, et cetera. Like I mentioned, we don't set the actual criteria. We just administer the programs that are set by the state, if that kind of makes sense, in that exemption example. The state determines and processes rules for property assessment and taxation. The assessor values and classifies, determines each portion of what probably to be created and sliced for later. City, county, school, et cetera. Levies, budgets determine how large or small the pie will be, based on services provided and level of service. And finally, the auditor. Tax rates are calculated to ensure the amount needed is collected. Individual tax rules are calculated based on previously set values and classifications. Here's an example for pay 2024 tax assessment based on the median home value in Carver County, which for the 23 assessment pay 24 has gone up to $464,600. Oftentimes you hear, I don't want to live in Hennepin County, the taxes are too high. I don't want to live in Carver County, the taxes are too high. Well, you take a look here, all these properties are located in Carver County, but you got a range of what, 38 or 3200 to 6,000. You know, I think, I think actually I got a township for City of Hamburg, $8,800 in there. They're all in Carver County. But you can see how that changes from city to city, township to township, school district to school district. See, City of Carver, $5,514. Just below you, City of Chan, you may be paying $700, $800 less for a property of the same value. Here's an example of what you'd call the big three taxes. A rolling history from 1957 to projected 2027.
So does that look like your charts, Jim?
Right, the three-legged stool, often referred to. This is a good one. Tax levies for government type. Being a county guy, I like to point out the bottom. So you can see the chart, I mean, it can be misleading because the amount of tax levy per millions of dollars is, you know, obviously has increased as time has gone on. But you can see the county portion of the total hasn't changed since the year 2000. It's still 30% of the overall property tax base statewide, aggregately. The city has increased. Surprisingly, school districts, their levies, what they're asking for has decreased. But look at the guy that showed up there recently, the state. It wasn't even around from a levy standpoint 20 years ago.
Do you have examples of the special?
Uh, sure. Specials would be watersheds, mosquito control, met council, housing and redevelopment authorities, those kind of things. They've been, I think.
See the names that show up on mine?
Absolutely.
So yeah, I just don't put the two together.
Yeah, so like back in the year 2000, it might have been like, I think when I, when I looked this up, it was about 3% some change, 3 points something to change, and it's maybe around 4. It hasn't changed too much, the specials. They're not a very big taxing authority, but it is part of the deal. I thought that was interesting. So that's straight from, that's straight from the state. Takeaways. SBA market values are determined by the assessor based on recent sales impacting who pays what portion of the overall property tax burden. Classification categories and classification rates are set by elected officials in the state legislature, impacting who pays what portion of the overall property tax burden. Elected officials and voters from the city, county, school, et cetera, determine the amount of money needed to operate. We just have to take all the calls for you. I had to throw that one in.
Going so well.
Property assessment.
I'm not sure if you have it in there, but maybe you haven't get into like the, how you determine the sales, but there used to be like a, almost like a quotient, like you had to be within 90% of the sales volume.
I will, I will cover that.
Okay.
Yeah, you talked about sales ratio.
Yep.
Yep. So here's kind of a side-by-side comparison of, on the left, what we're doing, we'll call it mass appraisal. Right? Or like aka macro standpoint. We've got 46,000 parcels in the county, and we, although we're not going to visit each one of them every year, we're expected to revalue every one of those properties every year. I've got 10 licensed assessors or appraisers on staff. That's roughly 4,600 parcels to revalue each year per appraiser. You can see below the giant server level computers, we've got our computer-assisted mass appraisal software. On the right, this would be more of like, you know, you're going to go buy a house, get in financing, you're going to have the appraiser stop by and make sure that the value is there to meet the financing obligations, the banks can order that appraisal. We'll call this a fee appraisal from the micro standpoint. A typical fee appraiser might complete 150 to 300 appraisals per year. They produce an individual appraisal report, which can take about 68 hours per appraisal. So as you can see, we got different rules. The fee appraisers are going to property at a different point in time than the assessor is. Our effective date for every year, for every appraisal we're doing, is January 2nd. Right, so that fee appraiser, you're going to close on this day, right? So this effective date is certainly going to be a little closer to where that closing date, where that purchase date is going to be. Different points in time. Mass appraisal focuses on specified time periods of sales. Fee appraisers may consider distressed sales or listings that would not qualify on apartment revenue study. Right? Those fee appraisers can use foreclosures or short sales or, you know, non-arm's-length transactions out there that we may not think are normal or typical market. So what does the assessor do? In summary, the assessor values and classifies property. Number one, quintile property review. Basically, we review 20% of the properties each year, or 1/5, depending on how you want to look at that. But we do, like I said, we revalue all property each year. We're looking for changes, verify property information such as measurements and condition. What else are we doing? Well, we're looking at permits. We visit property where permits were issued. If it changes the property, impact the property valuation. Just because somebody spent $20,000 on new windows, that doesn't mean the contributory value is 20,000 or even 10,000, right? It doesn't mean a buyer's going to walk in and say, oh, you got new windows, here's another 10 grand. Sales validation. All sales are screened and analyzed. Want to make sure that we have good data going into the sales studies, that we're making good and reasonable and logical decisions when it comes to changing values. We analyze and adjust property values. We review the sales and the market data to ensure appropriate value adjustments each year. And of course, like we talked about, we review appeals. We work with property owners and the boards review to ensure accuracy of assessment through the appeals processes. Here's what we look for. Like I mentioned, in summary, we're looking for anything that might impact value. Is our existing information accurate? Have alterations occurred with or without a building permit? Maybe it didn't require a one. Is the current county data accurate that we have on file? Our, our, our information, our data is only going to be as accurate as oftentimes what the taxpayer allows. Because by statute, you don't have to allow us to go through the property. So I've seen situations where on our five-year cycle, we haven't been into some of these properties in 20 years because they refused. The data might be reasonable, but it might not be accurate. So you can see how that can kind of change and evolve over time, so. Valuation consideration, location, above grade finished square footage, below grade finished square footage, year built, style, features, amenities, how many garage stones, fireplaces. I say grade, also known as quality. You know, there's a lot of different types and styles and year builds of properties out there. But not every 3,000 square foot house is going to have the same quality or the same condition. So hopefully that kind of makes some sense.
I have a question on the second bullet point. If alter, if alterations occurred.
Sure.
If you come across, or your team comes across that things were done without a building permit.
Sure.
Do you feel like obligated to report it? Or is it just kind of depend on who the city or township is, or?
Yeah, we're under no obligation to call some city up and say, hey, there was some work done with that permit. So really, we're just looking from an appraisal value standpoint, what the contributory value was. What was done for the property? So yeah, you might have remodeled your kitchen, changed all your fixtures, changed your electrical. We may or may not even know if you had a permit folder, if you need one. We're not inspectors, we're just appraisers. But the work that was done, we certainly couldn't deny that that would improve the sale price and value of the property. But no, to answer your question, we're not looking to, I guess, get anybody in trouble or call the city or whatever township they're located in. That's not, it's not part of the process, if that makes sense.
So if you're saying the appraiser is, is making these determinations. But they're not able to go into most houses. I mean, most people don't, they don't go into most of them. So then what, then you would only be able to.
Am I late?
To do these valuations off of what you can see from outside.
Yeah, that is true. We do get into a lot of properties. And you got to remember, just because we don't go in it, I mean, most people are going to sell their house, it's been on the MLS at some point in time. So we have some kind of a bar there, too, if that kind of makes sense. Yeah, per statute, we're allowed to make certain assumptions. Which is why when you get your valuation notice in the spring, if you disagree or see something you don't like, call us at that time. Because the thought is, you know, if you didn't let us in or we haven't been in, if something's wrong, we're going to get in there at some point in time. Because if you disagree with it, then you can't appeal your property without letting us come through to do a full inspection. So I guess, yeah, we're not, we're not going to necessarily get into every single property. But again, how drastically different is it going to be than some of the other properties in the area? So.
I have another question.
Sure.
So then if somebody says, yes, you know, you know, come in.
Sure.
And then you realize, wow, this is actually in the county's favor, you should be assessed a higher value. Does it happen?
Absolutely. Yeah, I mean, there's kind of two different ways to look at it. When we're doing our summer quintile review during our 1/5th of properties in the county every summer, we do that during the summer months, nobody's out there knocking on doors when it's 25 below.
You should be.
People would love us to.
They might take pick on you and let you in.
You know, not every single component is going to drive value. You've got to remember, we're trained appraisers, right? So just because you painted your walls, you threw some new carpet in, that doesn't, it's not going to make some kind of a significant change. But when we're out there doing our quintile review, they're just looking to make sure that data that does drive value and our camera software is accurate. Could it be off by a plumbing fixture? Sure. It's typically not going to be that far off with, from a grade standpoint. It's not like we're calling your property, you know, something like a 1 plus 10, and it should really be like a 3 minus 10. It's not going to be that big of a difference. You know, with our modeling and our sales analyzing, you know, in an increasing market, chances are it's most likely going to be undervalued anyways. So, you know, when somebody does call an appeal in the spring, we offer to come out and do a property inspection. I always tell the appraisers to say, you know, listen, we're not going out there with a predetermined notion for value. We could think that your assessed value is reasonable, or maybe your value is too low, or maybe it's too high. So, you know, we're just kind of putting it under microscope and looking at it from an independent perspective, kind of starting all over again, if that kind of makes sense. And then that's what we're kind of doing, I looked at, I showed you that fee appraiser example. When there's an appeal or tax petition, that's when we are diving into that detail and working out those big reports, if that kind of makes sense. So, yeah, I guess, you know, some good rules of thumb. Always let the assessor in, otherwise we're making certain assumptions. Could that work in your favor? Maybe, but as a way of kind of working itself out. If you disagree with your value classification, you think something's off, absolutely give us a call in the spring. I'll have the appraiser from that jurisdiction offer to set up and enter your inspection. I'll come and make sure all that data, those direct values is accurate as we can. It's still not going to change what people on your street, your neighborhood, or your city are paying for these houses. But at least your individual property is going to be, you know, within that reasonable range of value, if that makes sense.
Okay, so the value that you have this year, what I said is because of what you valued as last year. Like that is always the year behind, right? It's one year behind?
Yeah, so, so for example, right now, we're getting ready in the next few months. You're going to have your pay 24, which is January 2nd, 23 for the stuff that happened in 2022. If that kind of makes sense.
Okay, so this year is actually going to look, it's from 2022, right? Is that what it is?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. All right, so I'm going to bring up a good example here.
Okay.
My own home went up 30.1% this year. We have done zero improvements since 2020.
Okay.
So how would that work to have see a jump like that? And I have other people who have contacted me in the community who had fairly large jumps. Mine seems to be the biggest. And I live in a historic house down here, so it's an 1860 house. But without having any building permits pulled, any, there's no work that's been done exterior since 2020.
Okay.
What would cause a jump like that?
Well, without having your particular property in front of me and doing some analysis on it, you know, a good rule of thumb is just because a property is undervalued for a number of years doesn't mean we're never going to catch it and it's going to continue to be undervalued. That might have been the case, right? Sales might have, we might add some more sales or something else. So we're reviewing all these properties every year, not just say knocking on doors and walking through them. It doesn't mean we're not going to revalue or change the values of properties. So if I have an appraiser reviewing all the properties in downtown Carver or for this property type, this style, this age, whatever, because we're seeing a trend, he's absolutely going to make that change if something is sticking out and seems undervalued. Does that kind of make sense? So you don't have to have any work done for your property to drastically increase or decrease in value. It just means that someone reviewed it and saw something, it made a value adjustment.
Was it like my crack stucco or my dirt basement?
It might have been that dirt basement, because, you know, the market has shown those dirt basements.
They're really, I know, they're high on the list right now.
But as you know, people don't honestly call us and say, ah, I'm undervalued, can you raise my value?
Yeah.
So, you know, coming in halfway, maybe that's the reason.
Right, and I understand that obviously the market has changed for homes, but the other houses in the surrounding area who have, or similar, have not done any of these big things, did not see the same kind of jump. So, see, a tax court?
Yeah.
I mean, really, I'm trying to understand why a jump that high would come.
Yeah. Again, I don't have your, we're kind of just talking out of your comfort here, but yeah, tax court is absolutely an option for you. And remember, tax court, you know, just to kind of say a little bit of a tax court, it is a process. So you've got, you know, production of documents, interrogatories, you have to come up, you have to hire an appraiser and have an independent appraisal done. So we don't see a lot of residential tax court petitions for those reasons. You know, so, but if you think that, you know, disparity is that great, absolutely file a tax court. But just remember, you're going to have to spend $300 to $500 to have an appraisal done. And that appraisal is absolutely going to have to come in significantly lower than that assessed value. So it would have to be pretty egregious for it to make that, if that kind of, if that makes sense.
Ryan, on a case like that, if any resident, if I called you
Sure.
would your assessor staff be able to like pull my file and give it some line of sight to like, here's what's going on with your property?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely. Yeah, that's kind of what's saying, I have your property information in front of me.
But that would be available to like have that analysis done and they wouldn't just be speaking in generality?
Yeah, yeah, we're all kind of just sitting here in a boardroom. I don't know anything about her property or why or what it has done, anything or the history of it. But yeah, anybody can call us at any given time and find out, you know, when and why the property valuation has changed.
So is that like a file if you go onto the county offices? Do you pull your file, take a look at what?
Well, there isn't like a file, but what you could give is a copy of your property record card, if that kind of makes sense.
Is that what you already find online or is it something different?
No, it would just be, it would show you like your build, your house, kind of what we have for grade, quality, condition, what we have for bathrooms, you know, above-grade finished square footage, things of that nature. So those are really like a file. Kind of what I was alluding to with Brent would be the appraiser be able to look that up and kind of give a history of what's happened with the property.
And will there be notes in there as to why things?
Yeah, and if there isn't, I mean, people can go back and, you know, find out what changed from this year to that. You're going to try to find that, that big drastic change. Well, that's not good.
So why don't you just call the assessor's office directly?
Oh, now I hope they have a question.
Yeah, absolutely. Call us.
I can grab another computer.
Yeah, I might have to use your backup. Didn't expect that battery to go that quick.
I need that HDMI dis directions.
Ryan, no pressure, hope we have another, kind of, fifth team.
Oh, sorry about that, yeah, we got a little we got a little, Louie has some questions, I guess. Thanks for saving us, Brent.
Doing it for memory.
I think that was right about here last night.
Yeah.
Good. Not too terrible. Okay. So hopefully answered your questions on that. Here are some different quality examples. As you can see, we've got six different categories, everything from like lower than a builder grade to something that would be like an excellent or premier rating, Q1 to Q6. I'll try to move through these because I want to make sure they're meeting coming.
Thank you.
Here's that mass appraisal. We talked about acceptable range for assessable levels, 90 to 95%. You can see the assessed value divided by the sale price equals that direct going-in ratio. Here's a hypothetical where we have an 84% median ratio. You can see here with, when you have an increasing market conditions or a time trend, let's say you've got that at 1% per month. You've got seven months trended from June 1st to January 2nd. You can see that sale goes from being worth $100,000 to $107,000, thus changing that ratio. Department of Revenue wants to make sure that we're trying to account for each sale taking place as of that effective date each year of January 2nd. So you can see if somebody bought that property in January 2nd, in an increasing market like this, it would be expected to pay more money for that same property. That affects our ratios, which in fact is how we're going to change values. This goes over how that trend is determined with a 21-month study. Reviewing sales from January 1st, '21 through September 30th, '22, and can reveal those sales to be 1 to 21 value. That's a whole separate study than the sales ratio study, which is what we use for adjusting values. This just sets that time trend. So here's kind of that theoretical example. Kind of take a look at the bottom. Assessed was 87.5, the sale was 105. After we applied that time trend, that sale is now worth $110,000. Little bit about appeals, we talked about before. Like I mentioned, informal, talk to the appraiser. And we do have open book at the county assessor's office. We run that April 10th through May 12th, 8 to 4:30. Anybody can walk in, call or email. I mean, in reality, anybody can call, walk in or email anytime throughout the year, but this is kind of specific to that appeal type period. We have the local boards of appeal, we only have two left in the county. Everybody else is on that county board of appeal and equalization schedule. We do that by appointment only for county board of appeal and equalization for folks if they want to kind of plead their case to the county board. Actually, tax court can skip all of those steps. You can just file right in tax court. Appeals, you can appeal the percentage of increase. Focus on the end result, if the new value is not accurate, then you have grounds for appeal. The process, like I mentioned before, takes on more of a fee appraisal approach. You agree to property information for accuracy, compare your property to similarly recent sold properties. It's your opportunity to provide us with some information. Got some city and county data here. Currently, what forces are affecting values, supply of sales? Supply of homes for sale is low right now, as you guys know. Cost of construction, materials is conversely high. There's a shortage of skilled construction workers out there in the labor pool. Cost of development land is also high and scarce in some desired areas. As you know, interest rates are high, although they've been kind of coming down a little bit. We'll see if that makes a difference, right? Is that button going to be, that once it hits 6%, we're going to see a bunch of sales? Is it 5.5? What's that, what's that magic number going to be? All this is leading to a shortage of rental housing, which of course is also driving that demand. Some notes on our 2023 residential valuation. You've got Carver County in there, and you can throw us into some of the other counties, and what they did with their 23 assessment for pay 24. Talked about how the median home value is now 412, the average home value is 464.6. So we actually did appeal our residential market conditions trend for the 23 assessment pay 24. We know the state had an aggressive time trend, we have the data to support little to no time trend, and we were successful along with five other counties. Six of the seven metro counties did appeal that time trend, which helps because we didn't have to increase values to meet that 90 to 105 statute. So it worked out better than expected. But you've got to have the data for it. Interesting shot of median residential home values over the past 13 years. You can see that big jump from '21 to '22, when we saw median increases of about 22% with everything going on from 2020 and 2021 with, right? Who knew a pandemic would spur such an increase in home values? Talked a little bit about the growth in the county. We had an aggregate increase of about 2.1% residentially for the 2023 assessment. We did see some more lots out there planted. A little over 1,100 in 2022 compared to 1,690 in 2021. Seems like they can't get that ag land platter for development quick enough. How the other classifications look, commercial was up about 9% in the 23. Industrial was about 6.3%. Apartments were coming in just under a 10% increase. Ag saw about a 9.3% increase. This might look familiar to Brent. There's some value changes by class category for the city of Carver.
We show these in the council too.
Yeah, this kind of helps you guys set your budgets, your levies, right? 943 million in res, about 47.5 in commercial industrial. A lot of new construction on that res side. An aggregate amount of EMV for res was up about 4.54%. It doesn't mean that the average residential increase is 4.54%. What oftentimes happens is if you see ag decrease like that, which you don't have a lot of ag to begin with, a lot of that shifts over and becomes res and adds to that pool of aggregate EMV, so it can kind of be misleading. Pie chart for your value distribution. City of Carver is a residential city. And just to kind of compare, this is what Chan-Hastings looks like. You've got 600, almost 644 million in commercial industrial EMV to spread out that budget. Not as much growth as new construction. Other than Prince's Land, there hasn't been a lot of new plats hit in Chan. It's primarily built out. Seeing 55 mill over apartments and those kind of things going in. Actually, they've got plans, they're just in a project estimate for real. 334-unit apartment downtown Chan, 213 million that we're going to get going over there. So which is why you can see when you look at this, with all that commercial industrial EMV, that house in Chan-Hastings is only paying $4,700 in taxes, but the same house in the city of Carver is paying $55,000. You just don't have that commercial industrial EMV to spread that tax base over. Because it's not value times rate equals what you pay, right?
See, Ryan, you probably have to wrap up the shirt before the, by the way, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. I'm sorry about the battery dying here.
Is there anything that the council wants to follow up on or additional questions for Ryan before we know? Hopefully that was informative.
Do we have any, like, to this presentation, that a public presentation that we can have after the fact? If we want to review it?
Uh, it's just my presentation, but I can send out a copy to you.
Let me know.
Absolutely.
This was helpful. Whenever, you know, it becomes valuation season, we try to push out that notice to our residents through social media as much as we can, so we try to share that message. But I always hear about it in December.
Yeah, and we say there's an appeal season, but like I said, folks call us year-round, we want them to. We can't change the past. All we can do is kind of get things, you know, set up and get it fixed going forward if there was some kind of an issue or problem. So encourage anybody to reach out now, the sooner the better.
Thank you.
Appreciate the four-house town.
Yeah. It'll be that simple.
If only it was that simple.
Where do we find the one with the lake show?
Yeah.
All right. Do we have anything to adjourn? Okay. I'll make a motion to adjourn. A motion by council member Mark.
I'll second.
Second by council member Sarah.
All of those, they have to say aye.
Aye. I was going to tell them to aye. Uh, opposed, motion passes, all right.